Ina mana, ina reo, ina karanga tanga maha, te na koto. It's lovely to have you all here. I'm Jen Schola, Deputy Mayor and councillor for Maualua Maua Manganui. And I'm going to start with an opening karakia. Tu tāwai runga, tu tāwai raroa, tu tāwai roto, tu tāwai waho. Kia toao, te mori tu, te mori ora, ki ti kataoa. Homie, huii, taiki. And that talks about coming forth from above, from behind, and from around, and from the environment. It's vitality and wellbeing for all strengthened in unity. That was me. So we share a lot of information online. A number of you come to our meetings or see our meetings online. We write a lot in our, we put out a lot of media releases and on our website. But we know how important it is to have face-to-face interaction. And we'd like to share information with you tonight and obviously give you the opportunity to share your views back to all of us today. I'd like to, are you introducing your team or am I? So I would like the, all of the councillors here tonight. And we've got councillor Kurek, Hemi Rolleston, Mia Mahay, Steve Morris. They couldn't stand up at the same time. Rod Taylor, Kev Shula, Glenn Crowther, Hotapu Baker, and Martin Roseboom. Sorry, you were hiding behind sand. So just a little bit of housekeeping. Toilets are over this side and down the corridor. If the fire alarm sounds, please make your way towards a unisex running person in green. The team will guide you out. Those with access issues, they will be, you will be helped. After we have heard from Mia Mahay, we will have a response to that from our CEO Marty Greenfell. And then there'll be time for questions. We're trying something new tonight, and I did try to talk our mayor out of it tonight, but I failed. So we are, there is a QR code up here. It's a Slido, it's a way of asking questions online. That mean we can see the questions and respond to those. If you do want to, you just have to hold your phone, the camera of your phone up to the QR code. You'll see a yellow bar come out. You click on the yellow bar and it takes you straight into the question sheet. And you'll see Toronga City Council at the top. We are also, we do also have pieces of paper if you'd rather write your questions. Rog just trying it there to make sure it works and he's seeing it. And just in terms of questions, we are, this is being filmed tonight and it'll be up on our website shortly. We will have also on that same platform, any questions that don't get answered tonight. Or if we need to go and find more information, they'll be up on the website as well. We invite you to stay for a cup of tea afterwards. Most of us will be here depending how long we go. I do need to exit because hopefully lots of you know the Toronga Arts Festival is in full flight. And I'm going to see a show at 7:30, so I will need to duck out in time to get to that. So let's get started for tonight. So we are, as I said, we're having a overview from Mia Mahay and a response from our chief executive. Talking about what key initiatives are on the horizon, what's shaping our decisions right now. And I just want to talk about, a little bit about the journey so far. We've been here since August 2024. We became a team of 10 when we had the Ti Awanui Maori Awards by-election, when Makari Sidney had to resign in May this year. We have spent a lot of time reading, a lot of time talking, a lot of time being informed. We've got staff who have shared a lot of information and insights with us. And that's been a big part of our understanding opportunities and challenges facing the city of Toronga and facing the whole of New Zealand and better understanding that. We absolutely are wanting to think we are listening and engaging. One of the things we talk about a lot is, do we engage well enough? And it's your feedback that tells us whether you think we are offering the right ways to engage, whether we are doing the right things to allow you to share your input in with us. And that's something we're very open to hearing from you. Because with that learning, with that understanding, with the engaging, that's how we set the priorities for what we need to do to build the best city in New Zealand in Toronga. And that's all about how do we invest your rates that get the best city in New Zealand. But I can tell you across Toronga, there's lots of different views. There's lots of diversity in terms of the thinking. One thing we are very aware of is wanting to do things more efficiently. I'm hearing lots of people say, we absolutely want the progress, but does it have to cost so much? And I can assure you, it's something that is talked about at every meeting we have. We need to balance the needs of the people of Toronga, the diversity of the people of Toronga, with business, with education, with play. And we need to work out how we prioritise that spending right now, but also into the future. And what we're also doing is challenging status quo. And that's something as the team of 10 led by Mahay, we're absolutely delivering that message to our CEO Marty. And that's what I'd like to introduce our mayor, Mahay Drysdale, to the stage to talk through some of the ways that we are shaping Toronga for now and for the future. Mahay.
Kia ora, everyone, and thank you very much to the deputy mayor, Jen Schola, for the introduction and getting us started tonight. So thank you firstly to you all for showing out. It's always scary when you put these events out and you don't know if you're going to be talking to one or 100 people. And thankfully, we're more towards the 100 people, so that's a good thing. This is something that we're hoping to do fairly regularly. Ideally, as long as tonight goes well, we'll roll this out sort of on a quarterly basis. It's an opportunity to be face-to-face here directly from you, but also for us to give you a bit of an idea of some of the hot topics and some of the things that we're thinking about. So tonight, I'm just going to give you a little bit of an overview on some of the big decisions that we've made. Obviously, some of the topical issues. And then we're going to go into some of the strategy and what we're trying to achieve over the next three years of our term. Obviously, the, probably the best part of tonight, hopefully, whether you can use Slido or write your questions, or you know, hear from you directly and answer some of the things that you want to hear from. We'll have all the councillors up there and the tricky questions will go to them and I'll answer the easy ones. So firstly, just wanted to touch on our annual report. We, on Tuesday, sorry, Wednesday this week, we adopted our annual report. So what is the annual report? Well, the annual report is important because it talks about the past, well, the 12 months from the 30th of June back. It gives you a pretty good understanding of where your rates went, what the big sort of rocks were that were delivered in Toronga for the year. And gives a little bit of an overview of the year in review. Obviously, it is the year in review, so it's more reporting back than actually showing you what is ahead. And you can look at the annual plans and the long-term plans, give you that sort of insight into maybe what is happening in the future. So the last year's been, you know, a pretty significant year of transition in Toronga as we come off commissioners, going into a democratically elected council. Jen gave you a little bit of a background on some of the messages, I guess, and the direction that we're trying to set. But you know, there's a, it's a, it's a big beast that we're dealing with. And if you, if you look at the annual report, some of you will want to go and read the 365 pages of the full report. But those that don't have that sort of time on your hands, I can recommend the summary report. It's more in the 50-page range. And it gives you, you can probably in 20 to 30 minutes, get a pretty good overview of what's happened in the city over the past 12 months. And then if there's anything that you want a little bit more in depth, you can go and try to find it in the 365 pages. So what you will see in that, you know, we're managing about $8.2 billion of assets. That's what Toronga City Council is managing. And you'll see there's, there was around about a billion dollars spent between both the capital program and our operating budget. So that's the sort of scope that we're dealing with. Obviously, during this 12 months, there's been a bit of a reassess of priorities. As Jen mentioned, you know, we want to reduce costs across the organisation and lock in some of those savings for future years. And we'll hear from Marty about what he's heard from governance and what the organisation is doing it, doing about it. Obviously, as well, you know, and part of tonight is around that committing to engaging and listening to our community. So at the door, and I can see some of you holding it, there's a little bit of a snapshot of some of the highlights of our annual plan. I'm not going to go through all of those, but I encourage you to pick up some of the things so you can sort of see some of the range and breadth of what we do. It's been great to see some of the major projects completed. Homaru Sports and Recreation Centre opened earlier this year. And you know, from pretty much week one, they were, they were at 100% occupancy in the peak times. So that just shows, I guess, the, you know, how much need there is for new facilities out there. You know, in that, that transport and climate, you know, we built, we resealed 60 kilometres of road. We fixed 500 potholes. So you know, that's, that's sort of the scale of some of the things we do. We collected 38,000 tonnes of rubbish. In the event space, this is something that our council is very committed to because it delivers a lot of vibrancy. It, you know, gets, gets people out, brings people in to spend their dollars and in our community. You know, Zespri Ames Games, you know, there is some issues around traffic and that sort of thing. But if you see the benefits that that brings to our city, it's about 27,000 visitors come over a week and about $9 million is spent in our region. And I note that's, we're looking back a year, but I have seen some of the data from this Ames Games. And we had the biggest increase in spending in our region in that week of all the cities in New Zealand. So you know, that is, that is some of the key things. You know, one, one thing I'd like to highlight, and you know, if we look at the, the, sorry, the infrastructure spend, that was $415 million. That's our capital program. That was unfortunately a little bit under what we would have liked to deliver because we want to be delivering, you know, more and more for our community. But I guess what that does lead into is, is our net debt is $1.3 billion, which is about $138 million under what was originally budgeted for that. So that is, is one of the, I guess, the good things. So that, that's sort of a little bit of a look back. If we start to look forward and go into some of the council priorities and some of our focus areas, this is very much where, where we're trying to go as a council and as a city. So these, these are some of our, you know, our priorities to deliver on. And then here's some of, some of the principles around what, how we want to go about and deliver those things. So a lot of these, I just note, this, this is to be consulted with our community as we go through the long-term plan. It is fairly similar to what we inherited, but with a few little, little changes. And so I just, just say, while, while this is sort of where we're going, it will be confirmed by our community through that process. And again, we're committed to doing that. So just, just to point out, the, there's a little asterisk by the third one. And that is because those, those are all being consulted with our community, those four. But that one with a little asterisk, there was five and we've merged them into four. And then the one with the little box around it, that is, that is the new one that we'd like to add. And we can explain that over the next couple of years. So some of the key initiatives that we're looking at and focusing on, it's, it's very much, you know, around our aspiration to be the best city in New Zealand. But we've obviously had some, some big decisions. Local Waters Done Well was one of those. And just where we got to with that. So in August, we resolved to proceed with a multi-council water services organisation, starting on the 1st of July 2027. That's in partnership with Western Bay of District Council. But we're also keen to work with other Bay of Plenty councils, Thames Coramandal and Taupo District Council. Those, those discussions will continue. So we've submitted our water services delivery plan going in that direction. Still waiting on approval from DIA for that. And we've signed a commitment agreement with Bay of Plenty District Council, sorry, Western Bay of Plenty District Council. And we're currently in a due diligence process with them as we work through that. To do that, we've, we've got a subcommittee of elected members that are working and they will join a, once the new council is sort of formed and sworn in, they'll join Western Bay and we'll work collaboratively towards that. So you know, we're committed to ensuring water services stay affordable and equitable for all our community. And the modelling that we have gone out to consultation, you know, has shown that there's savings of around $3,000 per connection over that 10-year period, which is quite significant. So we've also, around that value for money, set some sort of guardrails of some of the things that we want to do differently in our capital program. And you know, we acknowledge, you know, that there is some, sorry, there we go. But there has been some concerns over time around council spending. And you know, we're very much focused on that cost efficiency, accountability and transparency. So what we've, what we've tried to do is bring greater financial rigor, you know, that stronger project management discipline. And hopefully, that's going to help drive the confidence for rate pass that their money is spent more wisely and where that is needed. So we're going to just keep, keep going, you know, trying to deliver that value for money with people. This is going to mean that there is going to be some projects that get delayed or cancelled. And you know, if, if they don't, if we can't find a way to deliver that value for money, we certainly don't apologise for that because, you know, we do need to take care of every dollar that we spend. So one example has been the Memorial Park Aquatic Centre. We inherited that, that project with $123 million budget. You know, what we, we looked at when we saw that was, was actually, we're not sure that delivers great value for money. And we believed that we could get, get better value for money. So we paused the project while we had an opportunity to go and assess our options. Where we got to with that was, we actually made the decision that we're going to keep QEYC, which is three basketball courts. And we were going to shift the pool over to the Memorial Park pool that is already there. So we're going to build it where the, where the pool already is. So you know, that has meant that the spending to date effectively is not going to be completed. However, there is a number of the spend out of that around filtration design and some of the geotech and structural elements that we will be able to repurpose to the new site. But even taking into account that, that money that has been spent so far, we still think we're going to get a significantly better outcome. And you know, obviously, there's, there's some savings, like the $2.4 million for not demolishing QEYC. Along with, you know, if we can design it at a, you know, better level that looks after the community, then you know, hopefully, we can save tens of millions of dollars as well as that retention of three courts for the next 16 years, which will be a huge asset to the community, as I touched on with Homaru and the capacity constraints that we have. And you know, if you, if you were to build three courts from scratch, you're probably looking at a 20-odd million dollar project. So you know, there is, we believe there is some really good savings and some really good reasons to change that project. But that's just one example. We are looking at all the capital program at the moment. Obviously, some things are quite a long way through. And it's actually the cheapest or better option is actually just to continue along with that. And in those cases, we're, we're sort of just sucking it up and saying, okay, that was, that's where it is. And the best option, because if you stop a project, redesign it and start again, you, you know, there is some, some big, there is some big costs involved in that. And obviously, as I said, with Memorial Park, it still made sense, even with the spend to date, to look at other options for that. One of the other big things on the horizon is the regional deal. I'm sure you've heard about, there's three areas, us Auckland and Queenstown Lakes, that has been invited to work with government and create a strategic partnership. So we're working with both Bay of Plenty Regional Council, Western Bay District Council, and our Smart Growth Combined Tanga Tafenua Forum and Priority One. And we're all trying to work together, negotiate with the government, which will give our city some, some big benefits over the next 30 years. So what this is about is planning for 30 years with a 10-year funding stream. And you know, what, what does this really deliver to our region? To me, it's this blue bubble, which is the most important. At the moment, we're at the whim of government. They, they make decisions. We've already seen a number of decisions in the past 15 months where, you know, they've made a decision and we've had to basically, you know, backpedal or change direction because the funding we thought we were getting isn't coming. So that's what that creates, it creates certainty. When you have certainty and you know exactly what and when the government is going to invest in projects, then that drives confidence, both within the council, but also in the private sector. Once you have that confidence, then that drives additional investment in the region because they know what's happening and when. So that's, that's really a very brief snapshot, I guess, of what the regional deal, you know, could deliver for this region. So that, that in a nutshell is, is, you know, some of the big rocks that we're dealing with. Hopefully, a little bit of an insight into where we're going. As Jen said, all this is going to be up on, on the website. So you can, you can come in, you can have a look at the presentation, you can come and have a look at this video. As we said, any questions that we answered tonight will go up on the website. But also those unanswered questions, if we get that many, then those will also be answered over the next week or so. So you can send, send all your friends if they've got questions. And you know, as I said, we hope to do this a bit more regularly and get around the city and different venues so we can come and connect with as many of you as we can. So now I'm just going to pass over to our chief executive, Marty Greenfell, and he can tell you what he's heard from us in the last 15 months and how the organisation is responding to that. So thank you, Marty.
Kia ora, tato. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, Mahay and councillors for the response. It's not necessarily a response, but it's a complimentary presentation, a very short presentation. And it's the task that we've been provided by the newly-elected council. Now, perhaps if we wind the clock back a number of years ago, back in sort of, for the last seven or eight years, the organisation has been through a reasonably rapid growth phase. The appointment of the commission saw some large decisions which drove our capital program to places we'd never seen before. Seven years ago, we had a capital budget of around $100 million, just over $100 million. And today, our capital program is half a billion. And so, yeah, we've seen a rapid growth over the last seven or eight years, not only in the organisation and the demands on the organisation, but the services and the expectations of the community. So what's driven that? Largely, the population has driven that. And as, as the population has driven, has driven up and will continue to drive up over the next 30 years, the need to provide services to the current residents and the need to provide services for future residents is something that we have to tackle. So if you think about our transport corridors, our transport corridors across the city essentially were formed in the 50s and 60s, where the population would have been probably around 30, 40,000. Today, we have 165,000 with a lot more cars and a lot more people, essentially using the same width of corridors. And so our transport systems have really struggled to keep up. Fortunately, we've had great investment in our water supply services and our water treatment services. And so from, from an infrastructure perspective, our water services are in good shape. If you think about our community amenities, our sport and recreation, our culture and social amenities, the last major investment in any capital program or major amenity was back in the early 2000s when we saw Baywave established. And so, as you can see, we've got a fast-growing population. It's not going to slow down and we've got a, we're in both catch-up mode and trying to get ahead of the curve. Okay, so this diagram here is really just a graph of the last seven or eight years in terms of the growth of the organisation. Essentially doubled over the last seven years from about 600 to 1,300 now, of which about 170 are what we call our city operations team. So over the last three years, we've brought back in-house all of our contracts that supplied those services to our parks, open spaces and other public amenities. And so we now have a depot in Torrico and depots in the Mount, which actually service that part of the business. And likewise, that's just another graph of the growth of the capital program over the last seven or eight years. The message is very clear. Under the commission, they made big decisions and drove large capital expenditure. We needed to resource the organisation up to deliver that. Okay, we have certainly plateaued, I can assure you of that. You've heard the term value for money. There wouldn't be a day go by where that term is used by staff, heard by staff and communicated by our elected team. So the message is very clear. Basically, cost savings, efficiencies and doing more for less is a very clear message that we've received. Okay, so there also needs to be filters on what we do. And obviously, through the annual plan and long-term plan processes that we'll be going through over this year and next year, whatever we do... whatever we do and commit to needs to align with the strategic outcomes and goals, not of past councils but of this council and of this community. And of course, the organisation needs to be able to respond. We've heard the message. We are moving to respond. Okay, it's on us, it's a great challenge. The concept of saving community funds, doing more for less, is a challenge that we thrive on. Okay, and so we've taken up the mantle and we're working hard to ensure that that's the case. In order to deliver a rate increase, and this sounds of less than 10%, we had to strip costs out of the organisation. So these were costs that were directly attributed to what we call ratepayer operational costs. And so as part of that, we went through two resets within the organisation. The first was to downsize it. And so the task was to reduce the number of staff without impacting on service to the community. And so that did limit the areas that we could focus on. Building consents, resource consents, public services to the community is something that we didn't want to impact on. And so we looked internally, we looked at back office and we looked at those things that necessarily wouldn't impact on the community directly. And so through that process, the first phase of that process, we reduced 100 positions from the organisation. The second part of that was more around form and function. And that's when we shaped and reshaped the way the organisation delivers so that it's actually shaped and tailored more in line with the current council's direction. Full-time equivalent, yes. So there's just another pie graph there of essentially where the money is spent, the capital program is spent. These slides will be available as well. So transportation, there's a big spend. Obviously, there's a lot of catch-up to be done in that space. And apart from the internal roads and what you might call the internal network, there are five large, what you might call connector projects in transport, which we call the Big Five. And so you've got the Torrico Enabling Works at the moment at the bottom of the Kaumais there. It's a $230 million project there and that won't be finished until September 2027. We've got the Papamaa Eastern to change, obviously serving the eastern end of Papamaa. So Papamaa now is not the longest cul-de-sac in New Zealand. There's another way of getting in and hopefully shortly there'll be another way of getting out of there. You've got Torritson 15th, which essentially is the causeway through to Welcome Bay from the city. So that project there essentially will aim to create a tidal flow. So in the morning, it'll be two lanes coming into town, one going out and vice versa in the afternoon. So that project's essentially going through its design phase at the moment. We have Cameron Road Stage Two. And now I know that Cameron Road Stage One didn't necessarily resonate with everyone, but the product's there now, it's been well-used and I think the community are getting used to it. The second part of Cameron Road, which is Cameron Road Stage Two, essentially it'll be a different design but essentially serve the same purpose. But we do need greater connectivity through to State Highway 29A from the city. And so that second stage will achieve that. It's also to support intensification and the growth that we're expecting along the Tapapa Peninsula, which is resource consent, which is planned along that corridor to provide for eight-story buildings. So obviously, what we've done is our planning and our infrastructure needs to be able to service greater intensification along that corridor. And then we have the final one, which is connecting Mount Manganui, which essentially is Tucha, Hewlett's, Hull and Manganui Road. If you think about that quadrant, if you think about Hewlett's Road itself, which is a state highway, over the space of 1,500 metres, you have six sets of lights servicing the busiest port in the country. And not only that, it is congested with local traffic as well. And so there's a large project, which is going through a business case process at the moment, that we'd like to see developed at some stage in the near future too, to alleviate that congestion. That brings me to a close. And so at this stage, I think we're handing over for Q and A, are we? All right. Back to you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mahe and Marty. We now are going to ask all of the elected members, please to come and take a seat on the yellow sofa or on the blue chairs. Kiri, we apparently need you up here too, please. Would you sit with all these boys? I think I'm much safer here standing. So we do have a few questions have come up on slide O. Have people, we have got a few that also have written in. I could read them out, can I? So we have had someone say that from the report overview, it appears 107 million more was spent than collected, assuming 24/25. Is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, I think that's the number. But yeah, look, local government is quite interesting, I guess, with some of the accounting treatments. And certainly, it's been a bit of a lesson in how, what a balanced budget actually means. And in most accounting, it is that your revenue equals your expenses. That balances the budget and anything over is surplus and anything under is a deficit. Unfortunately, in local government, there's a number of things. So for example, NZTA pay 51% of all our roads. So what happens is if we've got a $100 million road, NZTA would have paid 51% of that road. So when we come and put them in the accounting records, we don't depreciate 100 million, we depreciate the 49 million that we paid. So in that case, while there might be a deficit, that sort of comes back. And when we're calculating the balanced budget, we'll take that off the difference, that depreciation. So there's a few things in that that sort of quirks, I guess, of local government. But in saying that, we certainly, and we didn't achieve it in this year's annual report, was that balanced budget. But that has been a message to our CEO and the organisation that going forward, we want to see a balanced budget. Again, it's never going to quite be equal, but it should be quite easy. We'll sort of look at to do those reconciliations of the reason that they don't quite balance and obviously depreciation on the 51% that NZTA is probably the biggest part of the difference of that.
Thank you, Mayor Mahe. The next one that's come in here is, "How is it that Marty Greenfield presented accounts to council concerning the cost of plans for the new swimming pool that was $2 million less than the actual cost?"
Yeah, look, that was, I guess, a little bit unfortunate in the fact that it wasn't made as clear as it should have been in the report. We've certainly had that discussion. What that was, was there was two lots of money spent with the Memorial Pool. The first part was around the sort of concept design, et cetera. So that becomes sort of an operating expense. And then in that report was reported the capital part, which was actually doing the detailed design, et cetera. So when we've gone through that report, the one, I think it was 1.6 million, not 2 million, it is in the report, it just was buried in about paragraph 54. So we've certainly sent that clear direction around that transparency, et cetera, that we want to see those numbers reported and being very upfront with what the actual numbers are. But I think that's certainly been a lesson.
I don't think I'm going to read that one out. I think that's something to do with these lads here. But so, "How are you going to help vibrancy in the city?" And I'm passing this to councillor Shula.
Firstly, everyone, thanks so much for coming. Yeah, it's great to see members of our community out here and just interested in what we're doing. And it's a great chance, as the mayor and deputy mayor said at the start, to let you know what's going on and to answer some questions. So the first one about me being a pest, I don't know why that's there. But about vibrancy, it's not my favourite word, to be honest, vibrancy. But certainly vitality, certainly whether it's the city centre and obviously choices were made about reinvesting significantly to change the future of the downtown Toronga area, to bring in more business. And also even in areas like over at the Mount and all the different suburbs. I think we're committed right across to have a city that people can get around and can go places and enjoy, can shop, can spend time with their families. So I suppose the focal point at the moment is downtown Toronga. If you look over what we do over 30 years, I'd like to think that we get right across the whole city and get the whole place jigged up. But certainly, last year, we were part of opening the park on the waterfront. And just to see right through summer, thousands of people there with their families, little kids, old people, grandparents, there enjoying that space, getting across, going across into the hospo places on the strand. That's the sort of thing to me, we just get people coming and spending time in a place is probably the best way for me to answer that. On top of that, around the economic centre and the city centre as a central focus for our city, I think we have got about 500 million that we're spending, that we're contributing. The private sector's putting in one and a half billion at least. And so part of what we do, and that's just the first stage. And then what happens, and that's the first lot of businesses that say, yeah, we want to be back in the city centre, bringing people to come and have their lunches, to work, to do business, Judicial Precinct or whether it's the Knowledge Precinct and the growth of the university. Having more people in that part of town, living day in, day out, coming for work can only be a good thing. So yeah, I'm not a fan of the word vibrancy, I'll say that now again, but certainly love seeing people in and around our city enjoying it. That's why I'm the pest, I talk too long.
Thank you very much, Kev, that was a great answer. So another question, "How are you creating an inclusive city?"
I saw that one coming. An inclusive city, and I think this is really important as we go forward. As of last year when we got elected, I think there was around 27% of our population wasn't born in New Zealand. They actually came here from overseas. So a big chunk of our population going forward is going to be new New Zealanders, people that weren't born here, they're here now, they're having children here. So including those people in our city is going to be more and more important as we go forward. I've been involved with a few of the different groups in the city. You can see Bevan over there from the Pacifica Group. Some really, really great people working in our communities, helping the city to grow. So I think council takes that on board. I think we've got a really good ethic on that through the council and we're doing some really good stuff. So I think the future's looking bright from that point of view. I think we do some good stuff and yeah, looking forward to seeing what the city looks like in 15, 20 years' time because it's going to be way, way different to what it is now. What would you like to know about the Rainbow? Tell you? Every member of our community has rights and... He's asking me whether the Rainbow can...
I'm just saying, I'm not a fan of the Rainbow community. And I'm just asking this man here, who's responsible within council that deals with all these sorts of situations, what is he actually doing to promote the Rainbow community within Toronga? I know it's a complex issue. I know it's a complex issue. We won't go into too much detail because as I said, it's just a personal comment. But I don't agree with a lot of what's going down with the Rainbow community and what they want to be involved with, the sort of money that council's looking at spending in that department, at Rainbow Crossing, at, what is the street again? Devonport Road, for example. Who wants, personally, I don't want to see my rates going on something like that, being put towards something like that. Look, let's get real. Let's get real. Let's get real. Rainbow community, and it's all this issue of inclusivity. And this sort of thing is insidious in the start. It'll start, what is it, culminating in our education programs at schools and so forth. That's the sort of thing that's happening now.
Thank you. Promoting, no, no, I don't think we're promoting. We're supporting. We're supporting all groups in the community. You've picked out one that you obviously disagree with. I do support the Rainbow community, I support a lot of communities. I've just mentioned the Pacifica community. We will move on to that. But yeah, I think we've got to be a tolerant... We do have to be a tolerant society and I think the community demands that.
Thank you, Rod. We've got a, excuse me, sir, we have got a process of going through these questions. So, "Does the mayor continue to have confidence in the CEO?"
Yes, I do. And the reason I do is because everything we have asked since being in council 15 months ago, the CEO has so far delivered for us. So as long as he continues to deliver and listens to what we're saying, then I'll continue to have confidence in him.
Thank you, Mahe. I didn't even hear who that came from. Who's me? "You stayed as a..." Oh, no, sorry. "I've had no follow-up on my 9th of June submission to the Futures Committee about a housing policy and online land assembly register. Does the mayor see its potential?" Address to the Chair of the Futures Committee? As Rod's just answered one, I guess that's you, Martin.
I'm going to have to apologise because I haven't received that email, so. We will have to reply, have to answer this question at length and put it on the webpage. Sit down.
Thank you, Martin. And just, slide O can only cope with a certain number of words. So this came from a piece of paper that our ladies are putting in the system. So that's why it was truncated, not for any other reason. In Marty's presentation, what was the 17 million allocated for economic development and what was it spent on?
Yeah, thank you for that. So that's this current budget and that's investment in the airport on new parking aprons for overnight stays for the aircraft. And also there's a large sum in there for the Marine Precinct. So that Marine Precinct fund is going to be reduced because that money won't be spent this financial year.
Particularly the Marine Precinct clarity because I understand pretty much now the rate payers don't run on the hook for that, that's all vessel rules. Can you explain?
Yeah, so it's developing the wharfs and sightings for the Marine Precinct area to accommodate the working fleet and white boat fleet that we're expecting. So that sum will be reduced down to $5 million this financial year. No, we wouldn't be building that building. It's proposed at some stage in the near future that the university will be building itself a point, yes. We're in a process, we've granted a lease for that land and then subject to designs and specifications of the building, it will proceed, yes.
Thank you, Marty. So next question, it's the top one and it's just asked by Fay. I'll just read it out from here with a few more words. You state that as a council, admin staff can all work now under one roof. Is that statement true? I was of the understanding all the staff cannot be under one roof. And then probably the similar question to answer, how can coffee machines supplied for staff use help all the struggling cafes? I'll pass the first one in terms of staff at 90 Devonport to Marty.
Thank you. So we have staff at several locations. We have water treatment plants and we have staff out there fixing and mowing our lawns and parks and open spaces. So all of the administration staff, those who essentially sit on a desk and/or drive computers can be located at 90 Devonport Road and are located there.
And do we want to have somebody to answer the question, how can coffee machines supplied for staff use help the struggling cafes? Oh, look who I've got to.
Thank you, Jen. Oh, it's not up there. Where is it? Is it right here? How can coffee machines supplied for staff use help all the struggling cafes? I'm Steve Morris, one of the councillors, I represent Papamoa. The answer is they don't. That's the fact of the matter. And I would encourage all of our Toronga City Council staff to avail themselves of the coffee shops and the availability in the CBD. It's important. Thank you, Rip.
And also from Fay, are you happy with the new volleyball courts? My experience as a participant supporter is the courts are too close together. I'm presuming this is Omaru? I think that's actually one we'll come back, we'll ask by venues and just get a view on that one. We'll come back to you on that. Thanks, Monique. Sorry, I should have introduced our staff who are doing a sterling business, supporting me here, Monique, Annabelle and Kerry and Sam as well, as well as our technical people at the back. I'm just going to keep going on here. How can a 500% increase in the operating budget over the past seven or eight years be mostly attributed to growth in population? How many people lived here seven years ago? Steve wants to do it.
I've just woken up from the couch. So I think approximately seven years ago, the population of Torong was about 141,000 people. And so we're at 165,000, what was that, Glenn? 137. Well, you know, you've got to include Papamoa, mate, that's the best suburban city. So, yeah, if we're going back to that, 500% increase in the operating budget. Well, the operating budget increased significantly over that period of time as well. So there's two parts to that. One is that as more things are built, you have to, under council policy and under the Local Government Act, you have to cash fund the depreciation for those things that are built. So unlike a business which sometimes cannot, you know, cash fund depreciation, councils have to so that in the future, when an asset needs replacement, there's the money to replace it. So that's one factor. The other factor is that not so much the recent, over the recent years, but... Anyway, general concept, general concept. Before that, so back sort of in the, before the 2020 COVID pandemic, the city was growing at two, even up to, close to 3%. So there was a large amount of growth in the city. And as that occurs, you need more amenities, you need more things for people, you know, the city needs work. The other thing is there's been a significant increase in the operating budget over the last four years. And for that, the answer to that particular question, I'd like to delegate that to Anne Tolly to answer your question, but she's not here today. So perhaps you can ask the Minister of Local Government, who extended her term. Both the National Act, New Zealand First Government extended the term of the commission or allowed the commission to continue, rather, and the Labor Government. So everybody's responsible for that one.
Thank you, Steve. A question from Cameron. The CEO stressed value for money, is that the forefront of every decision? Does that extend to his remuneration package? I think we'll ask the mayor to answer the first part of that at least.
Yes, I think value for money is certainly, you know, at the forefront of every decision we make. As I sort of mentioned in my talk, you know, there is certain projects where actually the best value for money is continuing to deliver what is already planned. And that is, you know, around the costs to go and redesign and start again. But, you know, certainly new projects, that is what we're demanding on every dollar that we spend. We want to be shown that value for money and looking at the benchmarks. Again, I think the second part, I think that's up to, you know, everyone to make up their own mind on that. You know, I think you've got to pay good people, you know, what they could get elsewhere to attract good staff. And when you have good staff, you hopefully get good outcomes. And if that's the, you know, if that's what you get, I personally would prefer to pay good people a lot of money and have less of them than, you know, you pay peanuts, you get monkeys. So that's how I look at it.
Thank you, Mahae. What is the feedback from hospitality businesses in the CBD? When will they begin offering nightlife opportunities for students coming to Waikato University? I've got Hemmy's put his hand up for this one, thanks, Hemmy.
Kia ora tato. Yeah, I think if you ask what the feedback is, it's they're struggling. But let's not forget, it's a tough economic climate generally as we speak anyway. But you heard Jen's got to duck off to the Arts Festival. She's going to go and have a couple of drinks on one of the bars on the way. We've got to create some, probably goes back to the other conversation, I think, that Herb, about vitality, how do we create that? Waikato Uni have talked a lot about student accommodation, they've already started, started that conversation. Our sort of advice is, yes, there's a bit of a patience game because as you can see, there is going to be a lot more activity. The art gallery opens next month. There's a whole lot of more development, as we've heard, a massive investment in that city. We're working with the university to work out how we can get a lot more students in there. So the future looks bright. It's not just going to happen, but if, with all of this development, you've got the Craig's Building that's going to go right down the bottom of Devonport Road, that's going to create a lot more activity. I guess what can council do? I think we can create a lot more events, activities that will provide that vitality. We're talking about, you know, having more formal relationships with Waikato University, particularly in the CBD. If you look at some of the cities around the world that have got a university right in the city and have got a lot of, I guess, business bars, I think it'll come. I think when you think the jewel in the crown and that we've got in Toronga with the waterfront and what we can do, but it won't just happen. But my, you know, I know to the hospitality and of course, the other thing we haven't talked about tonight and we won't, we haven't gone there yet, is parking. But the businesses want, you know, their customers to get easy access. And that's also, look, you know, perhaps not so long ago, there was a lot more of a drinking culture. It's changed quite a bit. And so what can we do to create public transport that might get more activity? So I don't think there's one answer there. I think there's a combination of answers, but let's not forget it's a challenging economic climate at the moment and everyone's been a little bit cautious on where they spend their money.
I would like to ask, thank you.
I'm very patient. Two questions actually. One is I've heard on social media, I do not know if it's true or false, but I'd like to know if it is, that the council spent $80,000 on a set down in grocery bench. I don't know how true that is, but it was all over Facebook. So the first question is, does the council pay $80,000 for a set in the central city? We're getting a note from... We're getting a note from... We'll come back to you on that one, our CEO's... Grocery currently, according to these social reports. And your second question? Oh, 22 million spent on social services, was that four, three, four? On the skies, approximately. So what clear is it? What are those social services? Because I'm aged in a hospital, so I feel very strongly about help. So I want to know what clear are those? What are those social services? Because there doesn't seem to be a lot put into it, compared to the other options.
Yeah, I think you're referring to support services. Was that, was that? Yes. Yeah, yeah, so $12 million on digital projects. It's back office support. Also, there were some gallery land purchases and other land acquisitions which supported the organisation, so.
So is there any, anything in the projection of what you want to do going to be helping support services then for the growing population? I mean, we've got a, we've got a lot of people that need help.
Yeah, so that diagram reflected capital. So that's physical projects that we bought, that we built or land that we purchased. So the operating expenditure, there will be funds within that and we can provide that information to you, the amount that we spent on what you might call social and community support services.
So we'll write that down as a question to be answered, thank you. I'm going to go to the floor.
Thank you. Look, first of all, I'd like to commend your thinking, council, about the arterial roads in this town. I've got to, if you want to get the vibrancy, if you want to get people moving, it is way up there. I'm very concerned about 15th Avenue suggestions there. That really is linking two state highways, always was. It used to be a state highway. And I think you should be pushing hard on your regional development scheme to get that back as a state highway and do that job properly. Don't do it half-pie like you're talking about, that one in particular. But it's just a vital link that, between the motorways. And so I would suggest, I wouldn't want to tell you how you do it, but it's really, needs rethinking, that particular project. So if you could take that on board, that would be great. Work with government over that. Philip Surman.
Thank you, Philip. That would have been recorded. Let's go back to Slido and the mayor was right, it's working and it's a good way of getting questions in, so well done. What effect do the proposed earthquake regulations have on Toronga, particularly Devonport Road? And what will TCC do to assist the revitalisation of that area? Any hands up on that one? Shall we come back to you with the, is that something we can provide an answer online, Marty? We can just say we can do that, yeah. Okay, so we'll come back with you online with that, John. Philip Brown has asked, the city centre redevelopment was to be paid 50% by rate payers, 50% by others, not rate payers. How much money have others pledged to date?
I believe that at this stage, we've got about 40 million has been raised, I think it might be 38, has been raised by other at the moment. It leads into the next question, will rate payers be up for the total amount if others pay nothing? The short answer is yes, they will. And, you know, it's something that we're actively looking at, you know, other ways to help pay for it. So, you know, one of those things is looking to divest some of our property and assets around the city that maybe are no longer needed. That was part of that 150-odd million that was supposed to come not directly from rate payers' funds. But at the moment, the rate payer is on the hook for everything. But about, I think it's about 38 million that we've got at the moment. And as I say, we'll continue to try to find ways to pay for the rest of that money. So how that money's made up?
I just think it'd be helpful because I know Philip and I know some others here are interested, will be interested in what the difference is between the figure that I published in March, which came straight from our staff on my sub stack, which was the 21.427 million and the 38.
Yeah, I can come back and revert to exactly the breakdown, but we've got tech funding, we've got the, was it called Waters Done Well? Which was about 12 million. There's, yeah, there's, yeah, there's, what else is the big rocks in that? Yeah, there are the two big ones. And then, yeah, we'll revert and come back with the exact numbers there. Yeah, again, I don't, do you know the exact numbers? It's 1.3 billion now. 1.3 billion now. Well, we'll make sure we get the numbers. Oh, the overall debt has gone up.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. But it's less than what was budgeted to go up by.
Can I just ask a question on that debt? Is it as a percentage of the income that the council gets, what do we pay in interest? As a percentage of the budget you give.
Of our operating budget?
You've got to get away with $1 million of that you can pay it online or whatever. So you've got to repay that money and you must have a payment that you make every year on that money?
Yeah, around 80 million, but I can get you the exact.
Just as a percentage of your total budget, that's all.
Yeah, so approximately 16%.
16%.
Yeah, but again, I can come back with the exact.
What does the mayor think of a landlord on Carisford Street putting in a dodgy insurance claim to pay for a new kitchen? I think we'll, shall we pass on that one? Yeah. How, what are the toll arrangements for the Papamoa Eastern Interchange?
Hi, folks. So NZTA was proposing to toll the Papamoa Eastern Interchange and have a differential toll. So people who are travelling, if you're familiar with Papamoa, people who are travelling from Domain Road east towards Papamoa East would pay a proportionate toll. And then if they were going all the way down to Paingaroa, they're proposing that that be the full toll. NZTA consulted on that. There were many, many submissions, not just from the good people of Papamoa, but from the local Papamoa Ward councillor, there was a submission from Tooranga City Council, and NZTA are yet to release their decision. I would note that the government frequently does press releases about new roads that they are delivering and you will notice that every single road that has opened recently, none of them have tolls.
Thank you, Steve. How was the contract for the cafe on the ground floor of the council building selected? Was it put out to tender? Does council share in the profits and if so, how? I think that's...
Yes, it was put out to tender. No, we don't share in the profits. However, the, obviously they pay a commercial rent and every square metre that they lease effectively reduces the overall cost of the building to Tooranga City Council, you know, from obviously revenue and to, we pay the total lease cost of the building and then we sublease to them.
I'm aware that we are getting close to seven when we were going to finish. And as I said, any questions not answered, we will put on the website. So I think we'll do a couple more and then, so... What are the forecast net costs of running the new museum? Was that a, did you put that in, Glen? You've got two minutes. Two minutes.
I don't need two minutes, I can just read it out. Thank you, John. It's 15.2 million, this is according to what we got sent now in March. 15.2 million for the Library Community Hub complex, 13 million for the, what's called the CWM, the Civic Fari Exhibition Centre Museum, which is kind of mostly tied in together. And so I sort of lumped together those costs. So the museum itself is less, but the exhibition centre is a big part of that whole museum complex. So probably the easiest way to look at it is to say 13 million per year for that. And that includes a contribution to maintaining all the civic plaza around there as well.
Great answer, Glen. Last one, true or false? Councillors can be liable for past decisions if the Local Government Act breaches are ongoing?
We as councillors can be held personally liable for decisions if we break the law. And that's, yeah, that's sort of throughout anything. So otherwise, I don't believe that, you know, that we'd be liable if we didn't actually make a decision. Because, for example, if you're in a council meeting and the decision is to break the law, those that don't vote for that aren't held personally liable. It's only those that actually vote for that decision.
Thank you very much, Mahi. And, oh, you're standing up to do a closing karakia. We've got one more over here and this is the last question.
Hi, Marty and team, Anna Marie. You've met me before. I did write to you about 10 months ago, or I wrote through Gareth Wallace inviting council and yourself down to our business on the strand to actually visit and see for yourselves the problems that we are facing and the little things that can be corrected, that have not been corrected, that I have fought for three years for. One of my main areas of concern and it's health and safety as well as access, which I spoke to Gareth and several people about 10 months ago, is the decommission railway crossing to the new toilets and back from the waterfront. Now, I have had to phone police for weeks and months and council photos of kids, number one, jumping on the sail classes trampolines above the toilets. One will fall to their death at some point. This has gone on for months and months and months. I have written and taken photographs of kids jumping fencing because there is no official crossing there anymore. I write and send letters and photos when all the fencing falls down. I appear to be, it seems, the only one fighting the battle. I don't wish to be here fighting. I know we're all trying to fix the city. But that was decommissioned when the parking was taken away, which is the biggest asset that we lost. We know that. But when you build toilets and people can't get to toilets and you build playgrounds and people can't get from playgrounds across to businesses to have an ice cream while their parents have a beer, you have a problem. And I have been met constantly on the street at the Mount and being told, we don't come to your business anymore. And I'm representing other businesses, not just ours, because we can't get across that crossing, because we have to go down to one or other two ends and we're not going to do that with kids, et cetera, et cetera. Long story, long story cut short. I asked could Rail New Zealand not be contacted to put the rail gates back in? The crossing is still working, the lights are still working. Why you guys figure out what you're going to do with money taken back from funding Anne Tally gave for the Central Plaza project? Okay, project, why aren't we allowing that crossing to function? That's the question.
I can do it. This is something that has been brought up and we have discussed it both with the hospo's down on the street. I think I've spoken to Ralph about this at a couple of meetings. It is something that's underway at the moment. It's one of the projects we're currently looking at. I think we've got a subcommittee of councillors looking at the crossings. Take your point on the existing one, it doesn't operate at the moment. We'll probably follow up on that. I don't know what the immediate answer is, but I think we're close. Martin, I think you're involved in that one. You've got a meeting about the crossing soon?
Yeah, we've had several meetings in regards to the crossings. We're working with New Zealand Rail, who are an entity unto themselves around moving the crossing. When the whole waterfront development was done...
You don't need to move it, you just need to open the one that's already there. You don't need to waste money moving it. It's already there, we just need to put the official case back in. Sorry, I'm just...
What we don't, what I can't answer right now is it was closed for the construction, but we don't know if Rail New Zealand has closed it. Because crossings across railways have to be approved by New Zealand Rail. We just can't open it opening without their approval. And I can't say right here, right now whether the...
I just, look, this is a good example and yes, it is taking a long time. But, you know, there's a budget there at the moment of $12 million to put in the crossings and build the Central Waterfront Plaza. Now, we don't believe that $12 million is the right amount of money to be spending there. So we're taking, we've taken that one back to find a way to deliver that with a much bigger value for money. So, look, if you want it tomorrow, we can deliver it. It's going to cost you $12 million and your rates are going to... So...
What you took down to the construction.
So that's, yeah, it's a non-compliant crossing. No, so as rules change, things change. And so, like, we would love to open it, but, you know, we're dealing with New Zealand Rail around these things. So, look, I can tell you, you know, as Martin and Rod have said, we're on to it. We're not far away from agreeing on a much more value for money solution to deliver those. And, you know, we are committed to doing that. And, you know, dive present as well is a non-compliant crossing because it's already there. You know, we can use it as is, but, you know, by, when we open a new crossing, potentially that makes dive present something that we've got to do as well. So, you know, there's a lot of things in the air and I can tell you, if Kiwi Rail didn't demand such ridiculous, some of their costings and things using their own contractors, et cetera, it would be a much more value for money proposition. So, you know, we are in a little bit of a rock and a hard place, but we... Yeah, look, I'm not sure about that. Obviously, we weren't there, but we can come back with a reason that it was closed, you know, in the first place. So we can come back with that. But no, thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. It's been fantastic and really appreciate having a conversation. I think some of the councillors will stick around. If you want to come and have a cup of tea, feel free to. And I'll just hand to councillor Rollaston to give us a closing.
Just before we go, if you have a look under your seat, there's a lucky seat there. And people might have left, but it's a piece of blue tack under there. And if you look under your seat, I think somewhere in here, maybe those people that left. And I'm not sure whether it's a good prize or not, but you get to choose where to go to on the strand for lunch, supplied by the 10 councillors who will also come to lunch with you. So maybe you don't want to find it, but we'll definitely pay for your lunch. We'll definitely pay for your lunch. So if you bring up the blue tack, I think it's somewhere in there. While you're looking for it, remember there's a cup of tea. There's lots more questions that you might want to, might want to ask us over a cup of tea. But on that note, thank you very much and I'm going to close us. We've got it here, we've got the winner there. So if you come up and see Annabelle, she'll make sure you get to choose where to go on the strand and the councillors will make sure we take care of your lunch for the day, maybe get some vibrancy on the strand.